Okay.
Uh Scott Brier, Select Board.
Phil Marquette, Select Board. Go ahead Deb.
Deb Tanguy, Town Clerk.
David.
David Barlow, Treasurer.
Rory.
Rory Merritt, Resident.
Karen, you're the last one for now. Oh, you're muted.
I thought I hit it. I didn't. Karen Blake on, Resident.
Thank you.
Dave Barlow, how come you're always eating when we have these meetings? That's not fair.
Give me a minute to swallow my food there. I'm hungry. And I'm not always eating. Sometimes I'm drinking too.
There you go.
Yeah. You want to get started without Ned?
Was, do you know if David was gonna be on?
I'm not sure. I know he is on vacation this week and was uh
Oh, that's right.
When I was, I saw Ned today to go over a few things and um David was en route to Texas or somewhere like that, I guess, so.
Ah. I'd say better weather, but we actually got fairly good weather.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Let me, I want to look at the agenda here. Well, Policies would be the first thing on the docket and we kind of need him for that.
Yep. I'm gonna call a meeting to order, uh Monday, May seventeen, twenty twenty-one. You have a recording, Phil?
Yes.
All right, um, couple changes to the agenda, so we're gonna table number ten, uh for next meeting. Um, there was no update, so there's nothing to discuss.
Okay.
Um. A couple, couple other things I wanted to discuss, um Phil, and I don't know if we want to add this to the agenda or under um public comment or whatnot was, um, so the, the new guidelines that were released, so I'm thinking I'm interested in getting everybody's opinion on, you know, opening uh the town office back up and, you know, um, getting back to some kind of normal. So what does that look like for everybody? What are the, what is the state guidelines for that?
So the state guidelines is, um, oh, let me pull up the email I sent to Ned. Um. They're doing, so from a meeting standpoint, I was going off of, they, they pretty much have a universal guidance now. It's not sector specific except for a few, like hospitals and schools. Um, indoors, so I was putting our meetings off, uh, going under the events and gathering guidance, um, which indoors is fifty square feet per unvaccinated person up to three hundred. Of course, ours is on, our total fire capacity is a hundred and twenty. And, um, unless Deb has seen something else, the unvaccinated, I would stick with the unvaccinated because I don't feel the right to be asking people unless that's, I, I don't think we're able to do that. So if we go the fifty square feet, that gives us thirty-six in the gym. Um, for the offices, this is obviously gonna be because we can't tell Deb what to do. It is up to them, but I think with that, it would, if they say you can have, be open and be six foot distance with masks, so it's they aren't telling you you've got to be closed. They're just saying you have to, like, a lot of the other stores are doing, same as you Scott, is six foot distance and masks within that, so. Um, oh, hi Ned.
He's connecting.
Yeah.
Um. So Deb, what is your feelings on, what are, what's Dave and Deb's, you're in the office, what are your feelings? Like if you were to leave the door unlocked and keep your office door locked and half, the top half open, is that something you're interested in or maybe it was?
I mean, for me, that's perfectly fine. Um, that doesn't bother me and luckily I do have my door. I can split it that way to help keep them out. My only concern is, uh, when I do have researchers in, having other people just walking in and being like, well, I want to research land records. I think we still need to have something in place. Uh, as far as researching goes, that, that is still gonna be a requirement to, um, schedule an appointment beforehand with a designated time slots. So then I can at least try to pry towards that. I think having the doors open for our residents uh may make it a little bit easier for them. We're still in the process of registering dogs. Um, I've got a hundred and twenty-five registered. I still have ninety-nine that are not registered. Um, so I sent out a second notice today, so I'm hoping that's gonna regroup some others to start coming in. So definitely that aspect, I think, is gonna be nice. My only concern is gonna be with the researchers and how some are going to react if they just show up without making an appointment. Um, and still want to do research if I already have somebody in the office. Um, it's just gonna have to be an understanding on their end and maybe an understanding maybe on our website or something that at least is gonna state, yes, our doors are open, but we are still requiring appointments for all researchers or something to that effect.
I would agree with that, because your office is I haven't measured your office. I've only measured the gym, but I'm sure you probably can, if you go by that fifty square foot rule, you're probably at three people.
Yeah, and I mean, and that would still actually partake to only the nine to twelve hours that I currently have. Because of course, when David comes into the office, um, I don't think that should allocate for that. I mean, usually he comes in at one and usually I'm heading out the door at one anyhow, so it's not too much of an issue, but I would say as long as we can still mandate, uh, appointments for researchers at this point in time. Um, and between the hours of nine to noon with the same regulations, still require the mask to come in. Um, I'm all open for that.
All right, well, that's great news. So how do we go about making this happen? We just, just do it? Is there anything we need to vote on, post, or just, we just, this is what's gonna happen?
I don't think we
Well, I would think because you guys first voted
Yeah.
to shut the doors, I would think you folks should make some kind of a, a comment or at least have it reflected within the minutes that you're deciding to open the doors back up with these revisions. And one revisions would be, like for the researchers, you still need to have, you still need to wear masks, you still need to schedule an appointment and it's still between the hours of nine to noon.
Yep.
Something to that effect.
I make a motion that we, um, go ahead Ned.
I, I think rather than open, it would be unlock the doors. Yeah.
So I make a motion that we unlock the doors during normal business hours, um, face masks still required into the building and anybody who wants to do research needs to have a, um, a pre-approved, uh, time slot, um. Do I have a second?
Um, I'm gonna add to that. We should note the gym capacity of thirty-six. Like for, if we're gonna allow meetings in public, unless we want to leave it where it's just a committee still, the board or committee and no public, um, which may be the better way to go, because you never know what you might get for public to come in. You don't want to start turning people around because you're at capacity.
I guess, we should, um, we should actually try to do a meeting, next meeting, in, in, in public and then, you know, we don't I don't, in the last three or four years, I, three years I've been doing this, it's been, I don't think there's ever been more than fifteen or twenty people at a meeting.
I think it's gonna depend on, yeah, what's being discussed.
Yeah, and I think if we keep the Zoom there and we just make it clear that there is limited space.
Yeah, we're thirty-six.
Honestly, I've been coming to meetings how many years now and I've seen more people attending the Zoom meetings than I did the meetings prior to COVID, so.
Yeah.
Well, let's, um, I guess we can work that out prior to the next meeting if we're gonna have it in person or if we're gonna do it via Zoom. I mean,
Well, we already made it, we already made it, so we can do our boards and committees in person, just no public, so we could easily leave it that way.
We're also going to be doing a webinar for about four or five people on Thursday mid-morning, so it'll be a nice test run. So I, I think unlocking the doors, but having a, a clearly designated seating limit for meetings at thirty-six within the gym, and like Phil said to me earlier today, set the gym up as the meeting place and go with that.
Yep.
Okay, well, that's good news. Go ahead Deb.
One question. Now, I know I've been getting a lot of calls lately as far as is the gym going to be opening up for people to be able to rent out for birthday parties, for anniversary parties, or for something to that effect? That is still closed, even though we're unlocking the front door?
I think maybe come July, we, well, I think we gotta discuss that and think about that more, because we do have that ability, that control, but come July, we're not gonna have any restrictions anywhere, so I guess that'll be up to us.
It'll be pretty hard to limit, if we rent it right now, I would think the same rules would apply thirty-six people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
But how can you manage that? Somebody can say, yeah, I'm only gonna be inviting twenty people. The next thing you know, there's fifty people in there. Somebody's just been confirmed with COVID and now we're going through a deep cleaning, trying to clean that place out and who knows who else.
I don't, I, I don't even think it's a clean, I don't even think it's the cleaning part that I'm worried about. I'm thinking the liability part.
Yeah.
So let's, let's leave it closed for now until, I mean, it isn't like it's a super revenue source. By the time we paid a cleaning after an event, the town, it's not like we make a lot of money doing it. It's more of a convenience to the residents. But we also gotta ensure the safety of the residents, so I think at this time, Phil, uh, Phil, we'll, we'll use your recommendations and
Yep.
Yeah, keep it closed until, I mean, for meetings and whatnot, where we know how many people we're gonna be, but as far as renting it out, I think we should keep it closed until there's no restrictions.
Yep.
Okay. Um, moving on to public comment, do you have any public comment tonight?
I was just here to see if there was any kind of an update on the ATV, um, ordinance stuff and what the plan is. I, I know what the plan is for that moving forward, but, um, do you have any sense of a timeline on that at all, Scott and Phil?
The
Go ahead.
Planning Commission, I think, well, I know we sent, the, Dan was gonna take all the stuff from last week back and their meeting, their next meeting isn't until June now.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
And I think by the time everything gets posted back and forth, I think, you know, the consensus of of all the changes and revisions to the ordinance are gonna, you know, go by on how this summer really does go and how happy it is, you know? We had a three to one vote, um, for the residents of the town, three to one vote as far as being in favor of the ATVs and of the ordinance. So, um, I'd really like to see how it goes and, um,
Yes.
make changes. We, you know, go ahead Ned.
Yeah, I spoke with the sheriff, uh, this morning and we had, there were some minor issues along Lane Road with, uh, helmet use, but other than that, no incidents and I've really, it was pretty good. I had no comp, we had a comment section on the website for complaints. We got zero. So like Scott said, I think we gotta sort of let this, with sixty-seven percent of the people voting in favor, I think we gotta let this play along for a while and see what we get and, you know, thank the complaining commission for their good and hard work. That's a foundation for future updates and, but we gotta see where we are now and where we go from here.
That sounds great.
I will say, yes, Deb, hang on. I will say I do, there are a couple of things that I think need to be added to that, but I do agree that maybe, that because of the timeline that it's gonna be, it's gonna be towards the end of the season before this, it would even get through the ti, the sixty days notices and all that, that we work with what's come up over the summer and that puts two years under the belt and then we can even bring it up at town meeting and it can be voted on then instead of going through the whole rigmarole of a petition and all that. If that were to come, the, come around.
I do have one question. I did have one resident who, um, contacted me today. I did send an email to Dave and to Ned um, in regards to the Lane Road. They were just requesting if additional fluoride or calcium chloride could be put down on a more regular basis to help offset the dust that was picking up. Um, they absolutely stated as far as the ATV years this weekend, they are very respectable. They maintained your speed limit. They had no issues with that. Their only issue was the dust cloud that remained from morning till night, both my, uh, both Saturday and Sunday. Um, so they're just requesting that the town, we put this ordinance through if we can exercise and be out a little bit more often, putting calcium, I guess, down on the road to help deflect all the dust that's being generated by the ATV. So I just wanted to put that out to your guys' attention before board has to, uh, probably a discussion or something in regards to that.
Yep. For me living right on the trail, I can agree with that.
We, um, we definitely on our next agenda, Ned, we're gonna do, uh, you know, uh, an update on, you know, roads and paving and maintenance and come up with like a capital plan.
Yeah, we'll definitely have the, definitely the initial start of that at next meeting. Dave will be back from vacation. I'm not sure he's using calcium, but whatever he's using, we can make sure we put down a little more so that it, dust is knocked down or put it on at a regular, more regular basis.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm happy there's not, you know, fifty people on here complaining tonight and, um, if there was anything major, I'm su, I would expect they would be wasting their opinion, so, um, yeah, good job. All right, any other public comment? Seeing none, let's move on to policies, review and re-adoption. Do we have, uh, the personal policy? Did you want to put that up on the screen?
I'll share that right now. It's gonna, let me get that open. And I apologize for being late. Uh, somebody in my, uh, building over in Derby decided to fool around with the electrical system and, uh, you know, shut it off.
Are they nice?
Yeah, exactly. The, 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 the fund of, uh, rentals.
Mm-hmm.
All right, here we go. Can people see that now?
Oh, I need to give you, I need to change this here, hang on.
Yeah, you're not in charge, Ned.
No, I forgot about that. One participant can share at one time. You should be one. Oh, there you go. Now you should be able to.
There we go. Okay, the personnel policy hasn't changed much. What has changed, I highlighted in yellow. And it, it, the, uh, I can see one here that I missed. This road foreman should be changed to road commissioner. I added in supervisory stuff for the, uh, town administrator and coverage for, uh, people. If we move to section three, there's no change, four, no change.
Um, Ned, is this, so I, I sent you that email. Was this based off of that new one we were working off on last year?
Yes, it is.
I think so. I, I thought it was after I started looking at it again.
Yeah, it's, it, it's identical to what everybody signed up for last, last time around. The hours of service, uh, I added in some additional wording here where the regular work hours for persons employed at the community center shall be determined by blah, blah, blah. And then because it has in the sent, the paragraph right above there, it has, uh, road, uh, personnel are controlled by David as the road commissioner and then people in this building are controlled by me. Moving on, gratuitous and grifts, which is fairly straightforward. Uh, prior to accepting outside employment, people need to get their, disclose that to the select board and the town commissioner so that they can get uh, prior, uh, a, a, prior authorization. Now, this is just for full-time employees, not for part-time employees. So just key thing, that is only full-time employees. So that would be somebody working thirty-five or more hours of, of work per week at the town. And that would only, that would really only apply to to myself and to John over at the road tomorrow. We're the only two full-time employees. Everybody, either is elected official or a part-time employee.
Or Dave, right?
Or David, David.
David is excluded from that. He, I mean, given how many hours the guy's works on the roads anyway, I, I don't think he'd fit much else in. Alcohol use and drug use, very straightforward, right out of state law. Evaluations would be done by the, uh, in such a manner and I left it open to the select board commissioner, road commissioner or myself as reasonable.
Can we go back up to that, out of the work thing? Outside work. Is, is that, is the road commissioner in there?
The road commissioner is not in there. Uh, I can add that in there.
Well, I'm just, how is it, let me read how it's worded. Okay, so it's saying full-time employees, but it's not calling out the road commissioners not part of this, so.
No, it's not.
That's fine. So he, so he, so it's, the road commissioner is covered in that section, just we know that David's got too much going on that he wouldn't be doing it anyways.
Right.
Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure.
Exactly.
Not like some towns who let their, um, road crew use the equipment and do the hide work with this. That's nuts. I can't understand why they do that, but.
They, they do it in a lot of towns and it's just crazy. Okay, uh, tobacco use and then performance. Uh, employees may be subject to, you know, job performance evaluations, which is pretty standard in such a manner as people deem, you know, as, as the select board, the road commissioner or myself deems reasonable. I'm assuming it would be an, an annual basis or, uh, during a probationary period. And this is straight out of other, uh, the prior, uh, personnel policy we had and right from basically what have all the other towns in the state are following. Uh, use of town equipment and or property for personal use strictly prohibited. This would not pro, uh, prohibit myself or David or any other town employee from renting that the community center, but it is, you know, a rental agreement. Use of the cap, a computer system, very straightforward, same stuff as we've had, you know? You've got it, but you, you please understand that, uh, people have no, uh, privacy on using their work computer for personal things. And that the, uh, what was, there was one thing in here where I'm missing it right now. It's probably later in the document where, uh, employees shouldn't, depending on what you're sending, that select board has every right to record keystrokes or actions and nothing is gonna be private on there, so, you know, passwords and stuff like that could be seen by others. Eligibility for benefits, you know, it, it needed work in the prior, in fact, the prior edition said needs work. Uh, I've gone through it and struck out some stuff, but the town offers benefits to full-time employees persons working more than thirty-five or more hours a week, that being the corrode commissioner and the town employees plus the road commissioner and the town administrator, seasonal employees not eligible. Go ahead.
I feel the road commissioner and town administrator can come out of there, because full-time employees, it should be, it's thirty-five hours no matter what.
Yeah, okay. That's out? Okay. And then, uh.
How about, uh, seasonal or part-time employees?
Okay.
Well, I don't know. You might want to leave that, because if they're seasonal and they're only working, but they're working forty hours and we want to exclude them, right? Because they're
Yeah.
The town is not offers, offering seasonal employees, even if they work seventy hours one week, they're not getting health insurance, right?
Right, that's seasonal or part-time employees are not eligible for benefit. Now, the question is, is the now, okay, we'll just keep going because I could change on the next part.
Yeah, but part-time in law is taken as somebody who's permanent stay here year after year after year, but only less than thirty-five hours per week. Seasonal would be, you're here for the summer, you're here for the winter and then we kiss you goodbye. The holiday leave goes through the, the holidays that we have, have scheduled and authorized.
So here is something that came up last year when we were going through this. And it was something I think I had brought up is part-time and we really only have one. Well, we have one, we have, well, we do have one in the road crew too, don't we?
No.
At least in the winter time.
Uh, yes.
Is, and I guess that one is a little different, is if your part-time schedule has you working on the holiday, I had felt that you should get that. If you're working unregular hours, which I guess could be in Deb, maybe, or David Barlow could chime in on this, because I think we did have this discussion, but um, I just see it as a I don't know.
Yeah, but it says that if a non-ex employee is required to work on a holiday, hours paid for the holiday will be counted as hours worked when determining overtime compensation. For snowplow crews and things like that, uh, essentially they end up with no holidays. Especially for work hours.
So maybe, maybe on this po, maybe this policy tonight will, um, we can, we can make the changes that you've made, but then maybe not approve until we, we weigh in, let David get.
Yeah. I would do that anyways.
Because if he want, if, if he feels his part-time employees should get Christmas paid and, and New Year's paid, then I'm thinking I'm okay with that, but that's, that should be, you know, he should get to weigh in on that. You, your thoughts, Phil?
Yeah, no, definitely.
Yep. Okay, keep going.
Yeah, I know, I know when, working in St. Albans, we had a snowstorm on, uh, Christmas Day and Christmas Day was, uh, double time, so. Yeah.
Yeah, and that, and that part, if you're working on it, yeah, that's, and that's that's definitely understandable, um.
Yeah.
The, I, where I guess I was going, and I guess I don't know how, if, if we have, i- is if they're on a regular schedule, Monday through or a Friday or whatever holiday stays on, when is on, um, and they're scheduled to work that day every week. I know a lot of part-time people will work two or three jobs and they can't move their days around. It'd be one thing if that person can move that day around and make up that time somewhere else, but, um, but then again, maybe I'm just looking too far into it.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, okay. Let me just get that in there. Okay, uh, vacation leave is very straightforward. Most, if not almost all the towns in Vermont follow. I, they had this identical thing for full-time employees and how, excuse me, how you accumulate vacation time.
Yep.
And then unused vacation time, uh, it can be compensated for. And that, uh, where'd it go? It said, um, yeah, and then at the end of the year, if you don't use it, you lose it.
So that's where I was, that was another one I had brought up was the forfeit part. I and David, did we, did we discuss more on this of? Because I had brought up a, you can roll over a certain amount of time. Because the fact that you, yeah, the, the fact that you forfeit your time every year, but then if you leave, you get the, you get the, you get it paid out. Cause the fact that you, yeah, the, the fact that you forfeit your time every year, but then if you leave, you get the, you get the, you get it paid out. If somebody doesn't use all their time. Say they use twenty of the forty hours that they have there and they lose it, but then they want to, they would like to use some time in the first month of the year. They have no time to use. And that's where I've always, all my full-time jobs, when I've had them, has been you can roll over like fifty percent of your accrual rate every year. And, uh, then you either lose the rest or you, they pay out, but I would go and lose the rest of it. Forfeit it like you have, but have a certain amount that rolls over.
I mean, I think in our situation, I, I, but the less the town has to keep track of, the better. So I think keeping it simple and. And either paying it out if they don't use it or. You know, I, I think carrying it forward might get complicated, but that's, that's up for someone else.
You, you have another policy and I forget the name of that, that. Uh, or, uh, I have to go do a little research, but that implies pretty strongly that you pay it out. At the end of the year, like I think it directly states it. Is this, is this the same policy we're talking about, Ned?
No, no, that's.
Personnel policy?
That's, uh. Uh. Hang, yes, it is, but, um. Where would it go? I thought it may have been sick time.
No, there was definitely when, when it came time for Ed, Ed Maxwell to retire.
That was sick time.
Well, it was vacation as well.
Oh, yeah, I think it was, yeah. Well, that was, so that was, that was the policy because this policy is not in place yet. We started it, we didn't sign it last time. The previous policy does have that in there.
Okay, so I, I guess I would suggest another way to do it, even though it does require some tracking, is not to, um. Eliminate it at the end of the year if you don't use it, but just to let, uh, allow a limited amount of carryover and maybe for a specific reason, but. But I do agree that the less tracking, the better.
I would say.
We do, so we do want to, and this is, I guess this came up with Ed too, is that we do need a way to track vacation sick time in any ways because. If we're paying anything out, like we're putting in here, we kind of want to have a record of that. So you're going to be tracking it either way, right?
N- Nemrick is capable of doing that.
Okay.
We're just not currently using it.
Yep.
We want to keep it simple. So I guess, again, this is something we should discuss. With a full board and come up with, um. Come up with a decision that we, we all feel comfortable with, or at least. Two of the three of us feel comfortable with. I, I, I think basically, you know, if, if it was me writing the policy, I would just. If you get a week, you use it. If you get two, you use it. If you don't use it, we just cut you a check for and it's over with. And then start over the following year, you know.
And that I, that I can agree with. I, I just, I didn't like the forfeit part just because. You're working and that's part of your benefit, but then, in my opinion, if we tell them you're forfeiting that time, sick time, on the other hand, is a different story. But.
I think sick time, you, if you don't, well, that's a tough one, too. Yeah, um.
I would say that sick time, if, if, I would say roll over one year so you can accumulate no more than eighty hours of sick leave. And actually I may change that, hang on, let me, um.
You feeling sick?
Go ahead, David.
I'm done.
Well, no, I was thinking that, uh, when does, uh, short-term disability start? And I would say, I think that's after one month of.
Yeah, I think so.
Leave. So I would say you can accumulate one month of time. Before going on sort of, uh, you know, uh, disability. So, so the person is getting compensated through the whole time period. But let me look into that. I know St. Albans has had some legal research on that and has verbiage in their, uh, personnel policy and I can get that over here.
Okay.
And I, and just let me add, they have the same, a similar thing for vacation time. You can accumulate. I think it's up to the, whatever the maximum amount is. I, I don't think they go to five weeks. I think they only go to four weeks. And you could accumulate four and that's it. Everything you don't use, you just, you lose it.
Alright, so like go scroll back up a little bit now, just to that appointment. So right here, um. So, right here, this here employees for, uh, you, so you can leave it for an illness. So, so for instance, the other day you left for COVID shot. So.
I'm leaving tomorrow for a COVID shot.
So. I mean, you're, you're a salary position. I mean, how, so it kind of gets gray right here, like, so. Obviously, I mean, your pay is going to be pay and then I think this medics, but you could use sick time, but you know, how does it, so. It's kind of a tracking nightmare, isn't it?
Well, actually I would say you have, and I would include myself in this and David, you have no salaried employees, you have all. Hourlies, some of them are exempt and some of them are non-exempt. The reason for that, I'm saying that is that you have no contractual arrangement with, and with the road commissioner or the, uh, administrator, myself. Because there's no written contract, they're appointed employees, whereas for. And you know, in some cases where the treasurer technically is a treasurer or the clerk would be full-time. Their contractual in the, and I'm doing air quotes intentionally, they're contractual because they're elected. And that's a contract for a fixed amount of time and then if they don't get re-elected, they're, they're gone. So, I would say that. That I, for, for, actually, for COVID, I was assuming that I would have to take. Sick time to be out of here and that I, no, I would not be, other than using my sick time, I would not, was not going to be compensated for that time.
Yeah, that's where the gray comes in with salary and non-salaried is. I've been on salaries, I've been on hourly's and you. The, the, the sick time, salary time comes more played into when you were gone for more than two or three hours a half a day or something than an hour.
Um. It's definitely a complicat- it's complicated and, um.
And, and I think, I think Ned is kind of on a. On a track where maybe we should do hourly just because we're so small and I don't know, David and Debbie could say differently that. I would say when you talk about tracking, hourly would be a little easier to track, but in a way it's not, it adds more time, I guess.
It definitely having hourly is much more straightforward because it's, you know, time in, then time out. Whereas salary, you know, if somebody finishes up their work for the day at two o'clock. They can sort of blow out of here and I would prefer to see, no, let's not do that. Let's have hourly. You hear from eight to four and that, you know, people and the customers expect you to be here. Whereas salary is very different.
Right.
Potentially different.
As far as payroll goes, I mean, if you do it via hourly, then if they only work thirty-five hours, they're using five hours sick time, then you've got your one inch where you've got their. Employee hourly rate at whatever it is for thirty-five hours and then you have their sick rate at the same rate has their employment rate for how many hours they're using. Where then it actually distinguishes between the two and then actually for you guys at the end of the year, then you can pull a whole summary report on the base year. And actually see how many hours was actually used for sick, how many hours was used for vacation, how many hours were they within their positions working? I think for you guys, it gives you a better detail as far as are they exceeding their allotment number of hours? Are they not using it or? I think just payroll piece, like you said, salary, you can't designate that percentage down hourly, Kim.
Yep.
Okay. All right, moving, moving on. Uh, you know, uh, where it go, who have one type, uh, excuse me, full-time employees who have unused sick time will be compensated for said time at the last pay period of the calendar year. That's rare in this day and age. Most places you can roll it over or if you exceed the rollover limits. You don't get anything and in many places when you leave. If you have on loose sick time, you don't get it, it disappears. So that's something to think about there. Uh, bereavement leave. It's state law and, you know, it three is sort of this, uh, operating standard for most communities in the state of Vermont. Parental leave and parent, uh, the, this is clearly designated by the Family Medical Leave Act and. The Family Leave Act in Vermont, we have very little control over this. So I, I tend to say, don't, don't touch this. Short-term leave, uh. This is pretty, also again, pretty straightforward to participate in school activities. We have so few full-time employees that this is. It's sort of a, a, not a no-brainer, but it's, it's, has very limited use. Leave of absence, again, standard stuff from the prior things, medical leave with, uh, USARA. Were not permit, you know, essentially not permitted to do anything but what they, uh, what the law says. Uh, jury, again, jury leave, very straightforward. Most towns compensate the differential between what the, uh, court system will pay you and what your actual rate is. It sometimes gets a little complex in terms of the payroll, but it's very, very, very common. Overtime and comp time. Again, fair labor standards, uh, employees classified is by the, uh. Excuse me, Federal Labor Standards Act. You know, if you work all your hours plus some more, you get, you get that time easy, you get it not as. Payment or like, uh, like the, some of the people in the, uh. Uh, road department will get overtime, the comp and comp time is additional time off. And I would also say that you, we, we should keep track of this because it's, it potential, it has the potential to become. Some amount of legal action. I forget the town, but there was a town, uh. Several years ago that hadn't, uh, accumulated the comp time and. An employee, an ex-employee, excuse me, sued and was compensated a fair amount. This also goes back to. Uh, and like some court cases over the recent couple of years about state troopers padding their overtime and getting, you know. If wildly excessive payments and having to give back time and give back money to the state. Employment discrimination. Very straightforward.
Are you saying we have putting comp time in?
I would recommend that you do put it in and, uh. We'll, we'll, there, there, Nemrick. Nemrick can track it, but there's also, you can set up a very simple spreadsheet to track it for all employees. It's fairly straightforward. Employment discrimination. Very basic state law, it's been around for a many number of years, but, uh, the thing I added was out of, uh. It was out of the state law that employees should be encouraged to bring complaints alleging unlawful discrimination forward to their supervisor. Their supervisor doesn't provide them with an adequate answer, then it becomes to the town administrator. And then if the town administrator would have some time and then it would go to the select board for a, uh, adjudication and a decision. Again, very straightforward. Most of the towns in Vermont follow identical to this. Sexual harassment, again, very straightforward, very little and no changes. And it clearly defines what state law is in here and what sexual harassment is. And I have to have personal comment here. I have to say there are several, uh, gubernatorial personnel. And surrounding states that need to read this and understand what sexual harassment actually is. Uh, employee discipline, it goes through how the different levels of, and the progressive levels of discipline. No real changes in here. Again, it goes over what, uh, discipline, what is an infraction of disciplinary actions and what's unlawful and. Termination process, again, no changes, it's very straightforward. And severability is, I added this one in and I'll get rid of the semicolon ending there that shouldn't be there. Uh, it basically, it says that, and if any provisions in here are, uh, deemed unlawful or invalid, that it does not. Completely, uh, screw up the whole ordinance that they can pull that piece out unless it's an integral part of the entire document. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, um, so Phil, Phil and Ned, what do you, so I think we should just put this on the agenda for further discussion at the next meeting.
Yep, let me just add one other thing in here and I'll change my, uh, screen sharing here in just a second. The one thing. All right, can people see that? Their employee personnel policy acknowledgement. When we, no, okay, hang on, hang on, new share. There you go. Okay.
There you go.
Uh, employee, it, when we, when, when or if we adopt these changes to the personnel policy, we should get all employees to sign a new. Policy acknowledgement. I just wanted to make sure that people understood that this is. What we need to do to that we're completely covered. The one thing and I wish, was hoping David would be here is David as road commissioner should be signing this. So that's it. And it just says that they've gotten it and they've read it and they understand it and accept it. And this would only be applicable to employees, elected officials, even if they're being compensated by the town. Would not be required to sign this. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving on to. Conflict of interest policy.
All right, stop share. Hang on, let me open that one up.
No changes to this one, Ned?
Uh, no, there were changes and, uh. Hang on, I'm not seeing it here. Why am I not seeing you? Okay, do people see conflict of interest now?
Yep.
Okay, uh, David, over the last couple of meetings, really wanted us to add in, uh, consultants and, uh, the attorney. And under definitions, I added, uh. Consultant for or agent of the community. And you can see that it goes through anybody who's hired or contracted to perform and, uh. Basically, anybody who's being paid by the town. Should be following this. David had some very, uh. Strong, I'll say, opinions on various consultants who we've hired over the years that they needed to be. Amenable to our conflict of interest policy because he felt that they had very, very strong conflicts of interest. And if we wrote down to disqualifications, you can see where a public, it used to just say a public officer shall not. Now it says a public officer consultant for or agent of the community shall not participate and I've gone through and changed that throughout the document. So it's added in, uh, basically this would hire, excuse me, cover like our town attorney, town engineers. Uh, and people like that, people who have a direct. Role within the entire community, whereas say when, when we fire, finally hire someone to sort of fix the, the, uh, the community church. They would not be covered with this. They've, they're, they're a contractor and they're excluded from this. So that's the only changes in here. I've, it changed the, the public officer consultant for or agent of the community. A half a dozen times or so throughout here, but it basically makes sure that the, uh, the, the town attorney, the auditor, people like that are covered within this. And that's the only change. And that's the only changes in the conflict of interest policy. Thank you.
So I know the attorney's on here. Are we, even with all the other, other policies, are we checking with him to make sure that we're in good graces to be covering ourselves these ways?
I, I, I will check with him. I, I am fairly sure we are, but I will check with Brian because he should have emailed me and Scott about some other things. But I will check with him tomorrow morning, right and early. Okay.
All right, so we'll review this. We'll get some input from the, just have the attorney review it, make sure it's good and I, I don't really see any changes if it's okay with the town attorney on the conflict of interest policy. Do you, Phil?
No.
Okay. But again, we should probably table it for.
Yeah, table it till the next meeting. Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Moving on, health club policy, history and background.
Okay. The let me open that one up. This is why everybody got a copy of the 2005, hang on, let me close down one thing. There we go. Yeah. Okay. Everybody got a copy of the 2005 town report, which is when the health club, and I'm just gonna zoom out a little bit, when the health club repayment policy started. And if you go to page, it's, I believe it's page five. Yeah, there it is, right there. I'll put a highlight on it. Actually, I'll put it over those two. This is when we started the health club repayment. We set aside $5,000 for the repayment of health club policies, but a key thing here is any bona fide health club in Orleans County. And I think that's a really a key thing. But if you go through the next couple of years, you can clearly see that this is a betterment for the community. You know, it's a comput, it clearly computably improvement and went along with this until about 2010, when it was integrated within the regular line item budget. And then it's been in the line item budget every year since then. What has been lost in the 2010 to now timeframe is that at the membership in any bona fide health club in Orleans County. And I, I very much believe that this is something that should come out of our line item budget and go to the community, the Coventry Town Foundation, because it is clearly a community benefit style thing and a self-improvement style thing, similar to what the Town Foundation does. And I much, they probably should have $5,000 in there to subsidize it just to cover their bases in terms of the number. We've only been paying out anywhere between three or 3,000 or 2,500 over the last couple of years to this. But and, and I, and well, that, that's it. Thank you.
So where did we leave it with, when we left off with Leo Piet from the foundation? He wanted, he wanted us to find out where we came, where this came from and how it started. And then he also wanted us to fill out a formal request.
Right. And this is the information that I would suggest we put into a formal request. And at our next meeting, I'll have it all put together. We can sign it and send it off to them with a a budget item of, you know, a budget of $5,000. Or a request, excuse me, of $5,000. But we have all the information. We have the outline. We have the history of it, all the things that Leo would ask for at the the recent Coventry Town Foundation meeting that you and I attended, Scott.
So would we be essentially transferring that lighting, line item over to the foundation and adding it to some, every year, giving them that amount?
That was, that is my assumption, yes.
Okay. It's pretty much just changing who's the ownership of managing it then?
Yes. Now, if you look at line, if, if I rock was still around, I would say, you know, that's, you know, another thing, but I rock is now a lumberyard. Yeah.
Right. And I guess when, when and if we do, if they're willing to take this and we do put it in the budget to as an annual fee that we give to the foundation, I guess at, prior to the town meeting, we can figure out what they paid the prior year and, and go with that sum.
Yeah, I, I would say go with that sum plus some nominal amount more to make sure that we cut, that they're that they don't have a budget deficit in terms of paying out for the public health, for the health clubs. Yeah. But I, but I think at $5,000, they're not going to run over that budget amount in any one year.
Yep.
And, and, and frankly, here, let me ask my own personal opinion. God willing, they run over that budget amount because that means people are, that's a lot of health club memberships and that's a lot of working out.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'd use it, but I'm too lazy to go and drive to Newport.
Well, hey, you know.
You, you could walk. I do that. I, I run, well, once my knees better, I'll run in bike. All right.
But that was it for the, the health club thing. And I will download the form from the Town Foundation, fill it out and have it ready at the next meeting for, you know, approval and signatures.
So Deb, where, where does that leave you? So I know you had requested some funds to pay some of the townspeople back for their membership. So, and do you have that, that report handy or is that something you could have for the next meeting so we could address that?
No, that's something I absolutely could have for the last meeting. I guess my feeling on this is this has already gone into, the budget was already voted on at the prior town meeting. I think those should still be paid out by the town up through the end of June. And hurry up and get those paid because I've already had quite a few people asking when they're going to be receiving their money. And then if this is transferred to the CTF, then start it just like what the actual fiscal year is, when July 1st. And any requests after that point in time would go over to the CTF.
That should be July 1st. That should be July 1st, 2022 though, right? Because the budget has that line item in starting July 1, correct?
Correct. But we're already in our current budget that already has the 5,000 already approved in there.
Right, so we. Right, right, but that's what I'm meaning is, keep going the way we're going and we should be doing this through July, June 30th, 22.
Yeah, exactly.
That's when I found, and so at next meeting, next annual meeting, it'll be, it'll be on the warrant. You know, for at the town meeting to, you know, the residents of Coventry, do they approve the appropriation of X dollars to go to the Town Foundation for health reimbursement? The health reimbursement.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess that's how you bring it up to the town, the foundation too, is to say, we just, you guys to manage it. Right. And I mean, it's kind of the same way, like next year, we really want to have the discussion with them regarding the boat, you know, the, you know.
The starboat, yeah.
Yeah, so, all right. So yeah, get that together, Deb, and I agree, we should probably get those people paid back and move this along.
Put them on the next warrant then.
Okay. All right. Okay, moving on, budget update.
All right, let me close that down, go about this a different way. Okay, budget update. The key thing to remember is we're on budget. We're doing, we're doing pretty damn well. People, you know, we're 85% of the year and anything that's in this 82, you know, 83% timeframe is pretty good. Certain things should be at 100, like you know, the health officer or the moderator has been fully paid. Certain things shouldn't be. But I'll, let me just roll down a little bit into office postage and stuff. Next year, we just need to do, these are all like supplies and light item things. I'm not sure why telephone and this is higher. I think that's probably a Comcast thing. But we need to have a better budget amount and I will work on this very, starting the budget soon, but the $19,000 here. This one, I'm, I am not sure why it's that much.
That's actually inflated because that includes my grant, my almost $14,000 grant that I received from the state of Vermont in order to get my records online. So if you take the 14 minus the 19, you're only left with 5,000. So that one is actually well under budget for where it needs to be.
Okay. Dues and fees I'm not worried about because I think that's just making up for some other, the, the the road drainage budget and things like that that weren't paid in prior years. We just need to put more money into that line item for next budget cycle. The office miscellaneous. I
Now, that one surprised me because in reality, generally, we don't use a miscellaneous account because auditors do not like to see miscellaneous when they go down through our financials. So do you know what accounts are being combined together to create that? Because that one does not look accurate whatsoever.
I, I don't know. And, you know, you know, on next, like on Friday, when we're both in the office together, let's look through Nemrick and figure out what that one is. But it's just, this is just an update and yeah, but yeah.
Yeah, something got dumped in there that was expensive that probably shouldn't have. I'd look at that.
I'm thinking it might be a combination of several other office accounts. But here is just the entitled office miscellaneous instead of office this or office that or office whatever. I'm not, yeah, that I'm not sure. That one definitely, there's something not right there. Well, I think something's being combined together.
That, that was my assumption too, is that things had been misc, miscat, not categorized correctly and on, on Friday, when Deb and I are in the office together, we'll, we'll break it down.
So I'm looking at it right now. That has the IRS penalty in it at the moment.
Ah.
I'm waiting for the auditor to tell me what to do with it, where to put it.
That will be coming out of there.
Okay, all right.
That explains that.
That telephone and internet, that telephone, keep going, Dave, sorry. That telephone and internet one does look.
That could be some equipment because what did you end up buying this past year, Phil, for upstairs? We had some.
That one didn't have gone into the tele, that shouldn't, that should not have gone into the telephone internet. We purchased stuff for Zoom, but that wasn't, that, that was maybe a few hundred bucks.
I don't, yeah, I'm thinking, I wonder if it has some stuff to do with, I don't know, maybe with COVID or something of that nature. Postage definitely.
Unless the Zoom dues went into there.
They probably did go in there.
Which I wouldn't put them into there, honestly.
Internet and website.
Well, I'm looking at it right now. It's mostly Comcast.
So Comcast, did Comcast go up then? Well, it doesn't surprise me. My Comcast bill's gone up, so I need to get on that, I guess.
Yeah.
There's, there's a little bit of credit card stuff that's probably related to Zoom or something else, but it's mostly Comcast.
I can definitely make a big difference on the phone lines.
Yeah, and, and really, you know, a couple hundred here and a couple hundred there, we get to that.
It's not that far, yeah, they get to that.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, it's not hard to get there. All right, but we, thankfully, it's, yeah, the, the IRS thing is 10 grand, so that'll be nice. The office supplies and the assessor were only off, off by a, you know, a couple of bucks, but though it, it it just hit, I was looking for 100 plus overages. The office equipment, I need to speak to Kate about that. I'm not sure what the $700 is for that and that might be some printouts that they did, but let me check with her on that one to find out.
When did we buy the new computer for the assessor?
The one that's sitting on the, the desk in there?
That John uses.
Oh, okay, all right.
No, that's, that's an old computer.
Oh, is that okay?
Yeah, there's a check charged into that account, paying New England Municipal in December. We just need to look at that and see what that was for. $633.39.
All right. Another one to look at. Really, after that, everything else is basically okay. The repairs, I don't know what that is, but that's definitely a David thing. The animal control, we have little control over that, the expenses. I know they've been going up. That's just something we're going to need to increase in the next fiscal year.
I see nine on one signs. This, this just triggered a thing. Did you see my email the other day, Ned, about, to you and David about getting a new Hillcrest sign?
Yes.
Do you know if that's been ordered?
I, David usually jumps on those things right away and I, you know, I will check with him when he gets back to vacation. I'm, I'm pretty sure he's gotten on that.
Okay.
And I believe the Village Common repairs, when they went and did all the work up to the upper ball field, I'm almost positive a lot of those charges, where it was incurred to, I get that back up and go in the stairwell and different stuff like that was actually charged to this account because we didn't really have an account for that ball field and we just sort of lumped it underneath Village Common repairs.
Okay. Thank you. And that is the last page of the budget update. So we're, we're doing pretty damn well. Thank you.
All right, so you're gonna address those few things?
Yeah.
We'll look at, we'll look at it again, corrected next meeting, maybe they can.
Actually, why don't we look at it, the last meeting in June and we can make the final, you know, the final adjustments to some things before we go to the next fiscal year, make sure we spend things down and make sure things are aligned correctly.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Any, no, anybody have any questions about the budget review update? No? All right. Warrants. Look at those. Here, you want me to share it?
Sure, go ahead, Phil. You want me to transfer it to you?
No, I got, I got it still. I have. Screen two. Ah, right there. Um, so I went through these and checked them all. You got New England Municipal Consultants. 53, 10. And I just answered a question that I was gonna ask Deb.
That's on you to general.
Yeah, well, and I was, I've been seeing that. They've been coming under the general, there's 1,200. And then there's been this other line item missing and
Yeah, that's because this comes out of the reserve account and to make it easier for David, David when he has to go to transfer money, this sort of helps him to trigger, he knows what he needs to, needs to try, transfer when.
Yep, yep, okay. So the, the 5310 is for the reappraisal. And we're paying that on a monthly basis? Is that what it is or is that?
No, that's been monthly.
That's been monthly, okay. I, I've seen it. I just never asked you that question.
Yeah.
So that one's easy. The next one. Um, oh, I'm already down at the bottom. I went through, checked everything. I didn't really have any. I went through, checked everything. I didn't really have any. I don't think I had any, well, maybe I did. I'm gonna show you this one if I can find it. There's a receipt in here that I don't think I saw. All the freaking checks. The animal license. This I don't see on the warrant. It looks like.
Oh, you should underneath Jared P. T. Or Gerard Petit.
Oh, there it is. Six, six dollars, okay, so why is it seventeen? The overpay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any that are in great, I call this a great overpayment. I am refunding back some of the others who are overpaying by one or two dollars I'm not.
Yep. Okay, so I'll go back to the top. Scott, you're looking at your own. Um, finally, they all seem, I didn't have any questions, Labrin's lumber, ashboards, pest control, nature of design. Where's the flowers going? I guess there's one question. Is that down in the, in the village?
I tried contacting David today and that would probably why I did not get a hold of him because he's not working.
Gone.
Um, I just see there are some flowers by the front sign and usually he goes and puts new flowers in the village common and our different areas around those.
I was wondering if he was gonna put some flowers around the pile up here because that'd be look really cool.
Yeah, I thought maybe that's where he put them, but I saw tonight coming home that.
They're not there.
A fair number of the flowers went into the sign, the town of Coventry sign at, uh, Lady Bird Park.
Down at the park?
Yeah, and he put, did put some into the flowers, I'll say flowers, they were just bulbs at this point. They're just starting to sprout right here.
Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah.
Um, this Newport rental, that's that steel kit he was talking about last time, Deb?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't have any questions on it, Scott?
No, it looks good to me.
Well, well, it's just us, I won't leave payroll up there, but then there's payroll and taxes. I'll, uh, I didn't send last week's warrant that you had, Deb, out. Um, but you got, we all talked about it. I had all the uniform stuff on it.
Yep.
I'll, uh, send that out with these and I guess I'll just send it since David's gone, I'll send it to Scott and I and sign it.
Yep, that's fine.
Get them to you. Okay.
Or if you wanna wait until next week, if you prefer to have all three signatures on it and it doesn't bother me. Just as long as you get them.
Doesn't matter, UniFirst and Fred's have been waiting for a while now anyway, so.
And, and two is a majority, so.
Yeah, just send them out. Let's get them, let's get those guys picked.
Yeah, those guys have been very patient.
There.
Alright, moving on. Minutes, May tenth.
I'll pull them up here.
While you're looking at minutes, I'm gonna jump over and start my email and check and see if, uh, Brian has done, sent us anything on WEC at this point in the evening.
Yeah, I, I texted him and, um, you missed it in the beginning. We're gonna table that. There's no.
We are?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Are you putting up the minutes?
Oh, yeah, 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 I can, yeah, sorry. Tell me when you want me to scroll.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
One key thing that I've been doing that I know prior, uh, minutes here have not been had, they always had just the person's first name. I've, I've started to do like David R., Dan R.,
Yeah.
David G., things like that, just so it's clear exactly who, who said it.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yep. Yep.
And actually, just on the minutes thing, just for a second, uh, we've had about a dozen people download the videos of our various meetings.
That's cool.
I've, they need to get some hobbies, I think, some real hobbies.
I've gone and watched the city's board meetings and I, by the end of it, I'm asking myself why I did that.
I, I have to say, Heidi and I, Heidi and I occasionally, while we're watching the, the Village of Swanton's meetings, which are uh, Thursdays and we're watching them on a Saturday because there's just crap on television. Uh, we have a drinking game that's called, we call it Mr. Chairman. I won't explain more, it's inappropriate at this point, but let us just say Heidi and I had too much last Saturday evening.
Yeah, that's funny.
Yeah.
Hey Ned, where are those videos posted at?
Uh, they are on our, uh, YouTube channel and I will happily send you a link, David.
Cause you know I can, got nothing better to do.
I, yeah, I know that not to be true, so.
Um, let's, where are we at minutes?
Yep.
Okay, uh, do we, do we have to approve those? No?
Yes.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May tenth.
So move, I, I.
Um, I'll bring up a first thing in other business and I don't know if you had anything else, is speaking of videos and downloading. Ned, I know you and I have talked about the website, um, you, we should, I feel we should move in and get in touch with the guy I got.
Yes.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll send him your contact information. You can work with him on it.
Yeah, and I, my, I was planning on, uh, uh, Wednesday, I'm having my COVID shot tomorrow afternoon. I'm assuming I'm gonna have some sort of a reaction and be working from my basement in Swanton on Wednesday. I was gonna make, take home the thumb drive, the thumb drive here and make sure that we have at least five years worth of minutes for the, uh, for the website. Right now, we have almost eight and I think having minutes back to two thousand twelve is just needless, you know, just get stuff on the website. If people want me to have more minutes, I mean, certainly we can get them into an archive and have them on a drive so they're not lost because we should have a decade's worth, but I just don't think we need to have them on the website at all.
Um, you're gonna pull ours and the planning commissions and I don't know who else is there is.
Uh, the, the BCA, the planning commission, uh, the SWIP committee.
The BOA.
Pardon?
The BOA.
The BOA, um, you know, just anybody who has minutes, just so when we get to setting up the website, we'll have like select board, meeting in minutes, it'll have it there. The BOA, meeting in minutes and there, everybody will have their own little section in the website, so it'll be very, very clearly spelled out and rather than all the minutes going into one place.
So while we're talking about this, the guy I'm working with just did, uh, let me share this screen again. He gave us, gave, the town of Alberg, um, was one that he had just done and Ned and I both looked at it and we're like, yeah, base it off of that one. So, um, which what we'll tell him is he'll go in, make it kind of similar to this. Um, where you got your ordinances, policies and anything you wanna put up here. Very simple to edit, unlike what it looks like with our GoDaddy current site. Uh, when you talk about minutes, you have your different boards here and your members and then minutes and agendas and it just shows up as, um, your month.
Yeah.
Agenda, agenda, minutes, agenda, minutes. Having an agenda posted too is kind of nice because then you can go through and see what was on there. And it's where, and then you only posted in one, you post it one time, it's posted there, then the minutes show up. So, um, the other thing I was thinking of is the, I think the planning commission is the only one using Zoom, although is, are you gonna be using that for the BCA, Deb?
Well, that was gonna be a discussion, I guess, with you guys and depending on what we're doing with the office. I know definitely some would like to actually come to the office and attend it there versus via the Zoom. I would assume it's probably gonna be a mixture of both. Um, my thought is for the BCA meeting, we have to do our full detailed review of the voter checklist. Definitely in person is gonna be a lot easier for many people because trying to send that as a PDF and then to be able to look at it, depend on the internet connection, that's gonna create a heartache. Um, I need to make sure that I've got enough people there in order to meet my forums for both the BCA and the BOA. So I'm hoping, I'll be able to use the gym.
Well, we just did, you can, um.
Yeah.
And then, because BCA's are open to the public too, right?
Yes, they are.
So we could, you could still do it the same way where you have your board there and if it makes your people, if it makes your people feel more comfortable, restrict it to public still on Zoom.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion, suggestion, um.
No, if I can do that, that's what I'll do.
And on that Ned is, I realized you're able to download the planning commission meetings and post them to YouTube too.
Correct.
And so I don't know if you've done that yet, um.
I have the last, um, I will make sure tomorrow that it is downloaded and ready to go.
Cause I, when I had first looked, I couldn't find their meetings under the admin account. I, you had to go into theirs, but you can go, there's another place under recordings that you can go and find all of their meetings without having to log in as them.
Okay.
Okay, and then another business, only, only other thing I was interested in is again, is, um, Rory and the Fire District and you know, uh, the LCT agreement between us and the, the Fire District to get some legal advice on how to appoint then someone to the, uh, someone to the board or we send out a postcard and, and then what's the next step and possibly, um, you know, arrange for a meeting for, of all the members of the Fire District, once we get the results or the information from ZLT on what, what it could look like and if no one, no one joins the board, this is what their options are gonna be and, um, see if we can get any interest.
I'm gonna call VLCT tomorrow morning because they're slow.
Okay. So I have one other business thing, if I, if I might.
Okay, it's actually before seven thirty.
I'll speak quickly because I'm hungry too. I haven't eaten in twenty minutes. So I had a conversation with, uh, Nathan Holly, our auditor the other day is part of finishing up our 2020 audit. We have a three-year contract with him that started in 2017, so this 2020 audit is the last year of the contract. He's willing to continue, um, either under the present, extend the present contract or if we want to recompete, go through that. I'd really like to continue with him, just I think he's been very helpful and, uh, and fair. Um, which is to say, he's pointed out things I need to improve and, um, but also been very good at, at, uh, teaching. So, um, I discussed it with Ned. I, I think what we agreed was to let the select board know that we're looking at that and bring it to you next meeting. Uh, some kind of proposal. We need to pull his contract, look at the particulars and, and make some decision, or make some recommendations about the way ahead.
Yeah.
We're, we're able to extend without doing any RFP or anything?
Yes.
Are we thinking a, a contract with, um, with an auditor after they've done our books for three years? I would think the the workload, you knowing him and him knowing you and how we operate should be less, so possibly his contract price should be negotiated downwards, I would think?
Well, that's why I wanna look at the contract. I, I haven't seen it, so I don't, I don't have a good sense of what we're paying him. I can, I can look at the bills, but it doesn't give me the the nitty gritty of calendar year or fiscal year, what is it we're really paying for?
Mm-hmm.
So, just to let you know that we're looking at that, we, we have an issue because it's, just the year twenty-one is about to end and, um, on June thirtieth, in, in which case we'll be back, we'll be starting a new audit, hopefully.
So, yeah, I agree. If you think you're happy with him and, and comfortable with him and, um, they're easy to work with them, let's see what, let's see what they charge and review the contract and, you know, propose to us any changes and possibly, um, we'll ask him to re-quote it out to us.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so we'll be back, see you next, next time.
Okay.
Perfect.
Anybody else have any other business?
Nope.
Just dinner?
Dinner.
Dinner, okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you all for your patience on my, uh, stupid neighbors and electrical issues. I'm gonna have to talk to, I'm gonna have to talk to Rainey about who he rents to. Yeah.